Welcome to those who's joining us and glad you can be here. Jenna, good to see you. Jessica, Lori Rose, thanks for joining us. Lilly Weinstein, Lisa, Lisa, a couple Lisas. Marion, Rabbi Jacob, thank you for joining us. We're not. I wish I could see you. Hello. Tammy, good to see you. Wendy, thanks for joining us. Great turnout. Appreciate everyone being here. We're gonna get started here in just a second. Adina, welcome. Amy, Amanda, glad you can join us. All right, good, good show up. Real quick, thanks everybody. Welcome to our first virtual S J C town hall. I wish we weren't in the situation to have to have one of these, given everything going on in our community and our world, but here we are and a great group of people for you tonight, joining us to talk about the J. What's been going on and more importantly, what's going to happen here in the near future? Tonight, we've got a great group of panelists. Our CEO, Amy Lavine is here. Our CEO, Renee Cohen Goodwin is here. President of our Board of Directors, Orin Nissim is here. Donna Weiner is here, Director of Experiences, Senior Director of Experiences. The newest kid on the block, our camp director, Dave Flagler is here. Glad you can make it. And then our Director of V C S, Carrie Stowe is here as well. So, thank you all for being with us tonight. Getting us started is our President of the Board of Directors, Orin Nissim. Take it away. Don't forget to unmute yourself. There you go.
Hi, everybody. Good evening and thanks so much for joining us. It's a real pleasure to be here. First of all, for all of those who don't know me, I'm Orin. I'm the Board Chair for the J. I moved here to Seattle about eight years ago with my family and you know, the way we landed on Mercer Island is because the first thing we fell in love with when we flew all the way from Israel was the J. And so we became a J family immediately as we landed and have stayed so ever since. I joined the board a few years ago because I strongly believe in the J mission to be the center of Jewish life and culture in the region. And so earlier this year, I had the honor of taking on the Board Chair position from Liz. You know, we kicked off this year with really lofty aspirations. As you guys know, we had Vision 2020, second week of January, and we really celebrated our fundraiser and with the entire community, it was a really special event. And you know, as Amy and I stood on stage and talked about the next 50 years and you know, what the S J C you know, is going to do and we talked about redevelopment and the campus project and all the other programs. Well, you know, as we say, people plan and you know, God laughs. And so, you know, none of us thought that we would be, you know, dealing with this. So obviously, life changed quite a bit. You know, back in February, the J was in a really healthy position. And we were very successful in executing and fulfilling our mission and you know, we really do have brand plans moving forward. You know, we were also, you know, very healthy financially. For reference points, we were about, you know, 80 to 84% of the fees for service organizations. Our member units were exceeding budgets. Our, you know, E C S was exceeding budget, our personal training programs were exceeding budget. And our camp registration was far, far ahead of the summer. So we were doing terrific, but you know, of course, COVID took place and you know, with that, kind of all our plans changed. The team has been doing an amazing work and we've been really trying to continue to innovate and move forward and continue more than anything else to play the role of be the center of Jewish life and culture even in this situation. So you know, with that, I'd really like to hand over to Amy Lavine, the CEO for the J C C, to give the update. Thank you.
Thanks, Orin. Thank you for your partnership and support. We definitely have been thankful that our board is right there with us the entire time. These are uncharted waters for pretty much everyone. And knowing that you're all with us is really empowering and instills a lot of confidence and thank you. Appreciate all that. I want to thank all of you for joining us this evening as well. I know that there have been a lot of questions about what's going on at the J. People are really enjoying a lot of the programming we've made possible. And it felt like a right time to kind of provide an update. I think that if we're out walking around, many of us are seeing society start to breathe just a little bit and trying to figure out where the J is in all that and how we begin to reopen is something we wanted to just start sharing with all of you. And so that's what we're here to do and give you a general update on how the organization is doing. So I'll take it and take it from where Orin left it, which was kind of February, March, things were great, camp registration was fantastic and boom, like out of nowhere comes a pandemic. So I would say from mid-March on, it was kind of a blur. And many of you may have watched, we very quickly adapted and what we saw was our team working very quickly and agilely to deal with the case at hand and the crisis we were all facing. And right away, we took two major events that are core to the J C C, one being the Purim Carnival and the other, the Seattle Jewish Film Festival. And immediately, we made some significant decisions about both. So many of you may know that we took what has typically been hundreds of people, up to, you know, several hundred people at a Purim Carnival and we said, you know what, we still need to bring this joy to families around the region. So we creatively pivoted and set up a partnership with a local company, Blazing Bagels, and went out into their storefronts and made it possible for families to come pick up Purim kits and take them home and celebrate. And so we called that Purim to Go. And that was a pretty tough decision that we made pretty quickly. And it was neat to see the team move into action and also again, to keep that spirit alive in the community. And right thereafter, about a week later, we had to make the tough decision to put the Seattle Jewish Film Festival in its 25th anniversary year on hold. But again, seeing what was coming, it just seemed like the right decision. And I'm going to share a bit more about that in a bit. But I will again say that with the board's support, we were able to do a lot of things. Our entire team felt confident and supported in our decision to take the agency online. So since mid-March, we have been delivering a ton of content via Zoom. From E C S teachers engaging with their classrooms throughout the week to fitness classes that are happening every day, we are seeing incredible engagement. In fact, we're seeing 100 people attend a fitness class online and that's multiples of what sometimes we'll see in a single class. And it's just been really neat and we've received a lot of feedback that our teachers are doing phenomenal jobs, our fitness instructors engaging the community and keeping that connection with the participants in their class. You may have seen, if you haven't had a chance, take a look at our new website. John, who introduced us at the beginning, leads our marketing team. And in an amazing way, they took this opportunity to upgrade our website and make it easier for all of us to use that as a tool to access the great content and all the great programs that we have going on at the J. We also have our personal trainers doing Zoom training one-on-one and we'll talk a bit more about how we hope to see that back in person soon. But that was just another thing that we've just really tried to maintain these connections with people. And about two to three weeks into this shutdown, we saw our Arts and Ideas program lift off an amazing portfolio of programs. So I'm just going to cover a few. We started with, early on in that was a conversation with Merrill Alcabez, who activated what she called the local, or we termed the local front portrait photography project. And what she did was go around into the Seward Park neighborhood and capture images of families in this moment of quarantine, when we're all in a shelter-in-place mode and kind of capturing just the essence of what families are dealing with. And we were able to talk to her, share her beautiful works and again, just create threads throughout the community. We spoke with a local author, Lisa Fain, who just published a book called Bridging Differences for Better Mentoring. And as I reflect back on that, just being about two months ago, not even six weeks ago, and the world we're living in today, where bridging differences is just an absolutely relevant, just salient topic that we're all facing. And we just got a peek into that with that conversation. Our Bagel Bite series hosted by Pamela Lavitt, talked to six local bagel shop owners. And I had friends telling me they were kind of addicted to the series. They needed to watch the next one to see why that entrepreneur took off with his business and how he was inspired by, and I think they may have all been men, but how they were inspired by their Jewish roots and creating a connectivity within our community around bagels. So that's been very fun. We spoke with a writer of the show Unorthodox and we attracted hundreds of people from all over the world to that event. It was just fantastic. And then we had one of our own local community members, Aaron Kiviat, talk about how he had, you know, engaged in a local project when he was living in Cairo back in the in the early 90s and how he had mapped a cemetery, a Jewish cemetery in the center of Cairo. Again, over 100 people were listening to this story about his project and jumping online and saying, you know, I have family buried in that cemetery. Thank you for giving me just a peek into what that looks like and sharing your project and thank you for committing to our community. And again, what I'm trying to share is just this very rich picture of all the lovely creativity that's come to life and our ability to just take these elements in our local community and around the country, just to a new level. It's been fantastic. And last Thursday, we spoke with, we had a moderator and then four other physicians on and we talked about telemedicine and how that's shifting the way that we all interface with our doctors and the medical system now and into the future. Again, just another way to just bring connection and insight and education of our community. It's been really inspiring to see what we've been able to bring forward and also really neat to see the audience engage. I think in so many dimensions of our lives, we're all seeing that in this moment where things slow down, where we have more time at home, people are making space for programs and education, enrichment opportunities. And so we've really tried to seize that and we're going to continue doing so. And in fact, I wanted to share, if you haven't seen the emails or the updates, that when I think back to that decision to put the Seattle Jewish Film Festival on hold because we couldn't gather together. And so much of that historically has been about being with the community and celebrating our culture and really engaging. And after many months of thinking it through, we have decided to proceed with a digital film festival. So starting next Thursday, June 18th, you can log on and buy tickets and see one of nearly 20 films that we are now able to see digitally. And paired with all that film is a series of conversations, social opportunities to again, try to connect our community around meaningful content and in a way that art can do so beautifully. And so feel free to go to sjcc.org. You will see the information there. It's on social, it's on the film festivals, social feeds as well, but please reach out if you have any questions. This is a new format for us, obviously, but we think it's well worth it. And at a moment, you know, many of us call this "juniorary." If you look outside today, it still looks like it's winter. And so here's an opportunity to take advantage of some great content. And then last week, and I'm sorry, I have a dog barking. This is all part of the whole world that we live in. We had a graduation ceremony for our gift program, which is our giving initiative for teens. And another just dimension of the J and how we continue to keep this community going in this moment of, you know, sometimes feeling like real challenge and times where we're disconnected. But if you sat on that graduation call, much like this, we had a dozen, two dozen teens sharing their experiences about learning how to be thoughtful, intentional philanthropists. And while we weren't all together in the same room, it was incredibly powerful and emotional. So it was really another just neat example of how we've kept our energy going even in this pandemic. So those are some of the moments and silver linings that we've been able to experience since we shuttered the J in mid-March. And as we look to, you know, the next couple months or however long this is going to be, we're going to continue to talk about how we maintain that energy, the creativity and and figure out how we get through this. So I want to, you know, just take a moment, celebrate all that we've done and then think about how we go forward. And in that, we have to talk about the harsh realities of kind of the financial situation that an organization like the J C C faces at a moment like this. And we are not unique. Many of us who are sitting here on the panel, talk to our colleagues all over the country. And J C Cs are actually, many of us are very unique from one another, from city to city. And each of us are actually coping with and processing and making our way through this crisis in a different way. But we wanted to share a little bit about what that's looked like here at the Strong Jewish Community Center. At the end of March, we were in a really tough position. And we actually had to make some serious decisions. And at that point, we had to make the decision to furlough over half of our staff. And those that remained were on significantly reduced schedules. Now, I just listed a whole series of phenomenal things that we were able to bring to life. And we did that because, you know, we were all inspired and committed to our mission. And we were able to keep some of our teachers on in a limited capacity and many of the faces you're seeing here to keep this going. And while that was a very, very tough moment, we also made a decision as an organization to try to ease that moment for as many of our colleagues as we could. Those who do qualify and elect to take our Strong Jewish Community Center benefits, we were able to make a decision to fully fund 100% of their health insurance premiums. That was a moment and a decision where we said, in a moment like this, you can't have people worried about the costs of healthcare. People need to be comfortable, be able to go to the doctor and take care of themselves and their families. So that was something that we did right away. We also set up what we call the Strong Jewish Community Center Employee Financial Assistance Fund. And that was really a fund designed to provide bridge funding for many people who obviously had not anticipated this radical radical adjustment and instantaneous change in their employment situation. And so what we did was, many of you, many of our community members gave generously and we were able to then fund an account that's given you know, 15 or 20 gifts to our employees. And many of those people, and I'll talk about what's changed in between, but at that moment, many of them were in distress. And what we wanted to do was make sure that we eased that moment of stress because we care about all of our community and our employees are so core to the community we have internally and to what we deliver to our broader community at the J. The other things we've done, and I know it's important for people to think about, well, how is the J making its way through this financially? We've seen some really wonderful generous support of people who have continued to pay their tuition, even though the experience has gone from, you know, having a child in care for maybe seven, eight, nine hours a day to having a half an hour to an hour and a half of a digital experience. Those families care about their teachers and the teachers care so much about their families. And those bonds have inspired many of those families to continue paying their tuition to help support both the Employee Assistance Fund and the broader agency. We've also seen significant continued support from much of our membership. We are very lucky that the J holds such an important place in so many people's hearts. And with that, people are inspired to stay connected, to continue supporting our work because they know that in order for us to open up with strength, whenever that becomes possible, that we need to be able to make it through this. So we are so thankful to everyone who has contributed, whether it's continuing to pay your dues, paying your tuition, giving a gift to the J. We truly, truly appreciate it and thank you. And the other thing, and with that, I think I'm going to actually pass it over now to Renee Goodwin, who is our COO. And she's going to take it from here and share some other elements of the financial picture. And well, I'm happy to take more questions later, but I really thank you all for being here. So Renee, take it away.
Thank you, Amy, and thanks everybody for being here. In addition to the incredible donor support that Amy just mentioned, a couple other things have been really key as we think about our long-term survival. We've been really fortunate to be the recipient of two Small Business Association loans. The first of those is what is called the PPP loan, the Payroll Protection Program. And that is really a significant loan that has a large portion of it that can be forgiven. So it turns into a grant, which is amazing. This gave us the opportunity to rehire our staff in mid-May. So all of those employees that were furloughed or whose hours were significantly reduced back in March have now been brought back or been offered the opportunity to come back at about 80% of their pre-furlough hours. And we've only been able to do that because we have these funds from the PPP loan to be able to continue paying our employees. Now, some of them are doing work that doesn't look quite like what they might have been hired to do. We have some lifeguards who are helping us prepare our space for us to get back into it when we're able to do that. There's no pool for them to guard right now, but everybody has really shown an incredible team spirit. We're very fortunate to work with such a dedicated team. We're going to have to see how the next few weeks play out, especially as those of you know who've been following what's been going on with these S B A loans, the guidance, like with everything, is changing. And the rules for the PPP loan have changed, the timing has been extended. And so now we're reviewing what happens next. I don't know the answer today, but we're working hard to figure out what that looks like. The other piece is that just last week, we received approval for the Economic Injury Disaster Loan or the IDOL. This additional money will contribute to our overall financial plan, which in turn will inform our plan for our phased reopening that's happening in the coming week. So of course, we're carefully managing cash flow, modeling various scenarios, day in and day out, and trying to really fully understand the burden cost of reopening our programs at the J. We know we're not going to be able to just open everything like it once was. Going to have to be step by step and we need to be able to look at each of those independently. That information alongside the guidance from our public health authorities is really what's driving our work right now as we prepare for reopening. So everybody really wants to know, when are we going to reopen? What does that look like? So as I mentioned about the PPP loan, the guidance and information about public gatherings going back to some sort of normal life, whatever that might be, is changing pretty regularly. So staying on top of it is really a monumental task for our team. We've been tracking the various sources of information nationally, statewide, locally, and all sorts of resources that people like you and colleagues throughout the community send our way. So we have been tracking all of that and working for a comprehensive plan to open phase by phase. So let me tell you a little bit about what that means. As King County begins to approach Phase Two, we'll be starting our reopening in small increments. Consistent with state and local guidance, we'll be starting to open small group fitness classes. That means four participants with one instructor and also one-on-one personal training in the next couple of weeks. We're targeting to be able to do that the week of June 22nd. In addition, we are very excited to be able to start welcoming back some of our E C S families. Based on some recent survey data, we believe there are nearly 30 families who are ready to return to E C S. And as we are getting increasing clarity and guidance on how we safely manage childcare centers and mitigate the risks of transmission, we plan to start that, excuse me, in small groups as well. In addition, we have our site set on a mid-July date to open a camp-like program. It won't be quite the same as J Camp, but we're very excited about what we have in store. And those will be smaller groups too. And right about the time camp starts, we'll be setting up our fitness center to be in compliance with the Phase Three guidelines of Governor Inslee's Safe Start Reopening Plan. It is our objective to follow all of the protocols, to stay on top of all of the information. We know that things are going to change rapidly. It is our commitment to make sure that we adapt and that we continue to communicate those changes to you every moment that we can. That's the only way we'll be able to reopen in a way that everyone can feel confident and comfortable coming back in this new environment. And we want to make it as smooth a transition for everyone as possible. So we're going to move on to a couple other folks here who are going to tell you a little more of the specific details about some of our specific areas. I'm going to send it over to Donna now, who's going to talk a little bit about what it'll look like when you come to the J.
Wow, so thanks Renee. So as Renee was saying, we have been staying on top of so many different websites and CDC guidelines and everything just to stay current. So when you do come back to the J, you will actually see a lot of changes. Even though there'll be a lot of changes, I know you'll still feel our hurts and souls and it'll still feel like you're home away from home. So that's definitely. So, I mean, it really starts with this whole culture of awareness, you know, before you even come to the J and you wake up in the morning, you know, you're going to have to figure out as our partners, you know, do you feel well enough to come to the J and be out in public? So we'll start even with the pre-screening checklist before you even are, you know, able to come into the J. Our hours will definitely change to ensure we have ample time to clean, to disinfect every classroom, to make sure everything is spick and span. Before you actually come to the J, we'll have washing stations so that you'll wash your hands. You'll go through a health screening, including temperature taking as well. So, you know, we're just wanting to make sure that everybody is, you know, as safe as possible as they enter the J. Consistent with all the health directives, we will definitely ask you to wear a mask like you do in public. And, you know, the flow of the J is going to feel a little different. So just like when you go to the Q F C or other stores and there's arrows, you know, we'll definitely have some changing patterns. And you know, you'll have to look around and there'll be lots of signage to help you and obviously lots of our team to help you around the building as well. In terms of the fitness center, we'll definitely have a lot of space between people and the equipment. So we've moved some of our equipment actually into the gym because we don't anticipate the gym will be operating for some time. As I said, we'll have fewer people, you know, and lots more space. So we're looking into a texting system right now so that when you do work at the J, you know, you will have to actually reserve your time. And so this will be both for the fitness center, once we can resume, and then also just for fitness classes. So I know this is a lot of information and as we get closer to opening, we will definitely share a video for you guys. And you'll learn a little bit more about what you can expect from when you come to the J. And then obviously, what the J expects from you as part of a community, all bending together, you know, to, you know, enjoy ourselves but to keep us all safe. So, thank you again. And now I'm going to pass it over to Carrie Stowe, our Early Childhood Director.
Hi. So as mentioned earlier, we're looking at an opening date of Phase Two, so around June 22nd for an initial set of families. And we made this decision by a family survey, as Amy mentioned that we did earlier. You'll see physical distancing, keeping the classrooms separate, so there'll be no more combining of the classrooms. There'll be PPP and several other changes that will happen before we open. As we continue to develop and evolve our process, we promise to communicate them with you. There'll be F A Q sheets and such prior to opening. And now to Dave in camp.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Hi, everybody. I look forward to meeting everyone in person, hopefully sooner than later. At some point, as we were planning camp, it just became very, very apparent that the J Camp program that we know and love, we wouldn't be able to operate under the current conditions. And it was heartbreaking and we were looking at all these different ways where we could, you know, try to alter this, try to alter that, do this. But through this, we came up with a really great new program and it's called Jcation. Jcation, and we changed the name just so nobody would confuse it with our normal J Camp experience. But our Jcation will be a socially distant, safe program following the guidelines of the State of Washington Board of Health, the CDC, the American Camping Association and many others. And even though it might look a little different, the needs of our community haven't changed. Children have been inside for months. They need to get outside. They need to be with other kids. They need to socialize. Parents apparently want their kids out of their house for a little bit. I have, I've just been told that. I don't know if that's true at all. And so while things look a little bit different, our work is going to be just as important, if not more important than ever, given the timing. We plan to open for Phase Three, which looks like it will be in the middle of July. Of that will include small groups, groups not mixing and all the things that we, Renee, had mentioned earlier as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions as we go along. And so I think that's back to you, Amy.
Alrighty. Thank you, everybody. I know that we just downloaded a whole lot of information. So I would welcome any questions in this chat window. We are going to post this webinar and we will be creating, as many people have just mentioned, updates and additional videos to continue to keep the community informed and to give you a preview of the timing, the protocols, what you can expect when you come back to the J. Our goal here is to be as clear and open and transparent as possible so people know what to expect. It's a moment where I think people are treading out lightly and into the new world. so people know what to expect. It's a moment where I think people are treading out lightly and into the new world and we want to make that as comfortable and safe as possible. We're mindful that many of our communities, you know, we serve a very broad range of people. And our goal is to, of course, keep everyone as safe as we can and to abide by all the protocols that we are, you know, guided by, as many of the people who spoke before me brought up, the CDC, our public health guidelines. We have specific advisors from the Health Department that actually help us with our childcare. And so with ECS, they're designated childcare experts, and so we definitely follow all of that. The prioritization question I'm seeing in the window right now, we're actually in an interesting situation. So camp, we've seen many families, and we saw this in ECS too, families are tentative right now. So while there are not a whole lot of camps that have held on, you're also seeing a lot of families who have actually chosen to withdraw until they have more clarity. And right now, what we're seeing is this interplay of ECS and camp. We're continuing to watch both and manage our capacity across camp as best we can. And we've also started to look at other sites to potentially host camp if, in fact, we exceed demand. Right now, we're actually thinking that, given where the world is at and the demand we've seen and the people who are inquiring now, we should be able to maintain that on our facility. And of course, Hertzel has always been a fantastic partner in the summer and our ability to scoot over there and leverage some of that space is also a possibility. We mentioned this and kind of talked about this in passing, but we're gonna spend a lot of time outside. So we will be setting up tents that allow kids to spend more time outside. So you think about that capacity. You know, we're used to having over four hundred kids a week at our camp and we, while, you know, that might be a lovely aspiration right now, it's looking like the community is not quite ready to jump back in that volume. And so it'll be a different mode, but as Dave so clearly stated, and it's true, families need it, kids need it. So I'm less concerned about the kind of prioritization. I'm seeing a question about the gym reopening and the pool. So right now, and you know, those of us who watch every press conference that happens and read every press release, that's a full-time job. And what we're doing is tracking all that because the guidance changes. I don't think, I don't think anyone ever said there'd be a modified Phase One, which is like a 1.5. That wasn't in the original plans and who knows what'll stay in the original plans. But right now, Renee explained this, Phase Two is very specific about the guidelines about indoor exercise. So one instructor and four participants, depending on how you read it, maybe five participants, but four to be safe. That would be the guidelines and that maps to Phase Two. We're all in modified Phase One right now. And I believe since it started on Friday, the first time King County could get to a modified Phase Two would be a week from Friday, which would be June 19. And at that point, we are in Phase Two. And if we had a preview, the J can say, how quickly after that can we activate everything we need to do? We definitely have all that stuff lined up. We're training up our team and we're ready. But just so you know, that's mapped to Phase Two. The swimming pool and all the guidance around that is actually mapped to Phase Three in the current Safe Start, Safe Reopening Plan for Washington State. And so unless that changes again, we're gonna look at Phase Three. And that, if things were to stay on course, is mid-July, which is why we're again thinking both. That also grows the gathering recommendations and guidelines to up to fifty people. So with camp and with the pool, it's looking like Phase Three. That's also the time at which the fitness center can expand its capacity. We also talked about how we're gonna do that by moving equipment around in our facility to give people the space they need. But again, we can't exceed the original guidelines, which I think is fifty percent capacity at Phase Three.
Amy, what about the basketball and racquetball courts?
Oh, thank you. I see that now too. So right now, the basketball court, as we talked about, depending on who you ask, we have to see how many people are ready to play basketball in masks. There actually are plenty of people who just want to get back on the court and play in masks. We will maintain half of the basketball court to make that possible when it is permitted by the reopening plan. And right now, I've seen that marked at Phase Four, which is kind of unbound or unlimited recreation again. But until Phase Four, that's not really a concern, but we are going to keep half of the basketball court reserved for that or half the gym. The racquetball courts are easier to make available to people. And again, that's about size and space. So we have been a little bit less specific about that. The volumes are less, but we could probably welcome people back to that pretty quick. Camp often uses that racquetball space, so that interplay of camp and racquetball court space is something we have to keep in mind as well. And I, and again, we could probably open up one of those racquetball courts as soon as Phase Two because you're only playing with one or two other people. Although, you know, that, I was getting nervous when I even see three people in one racquetball court, but so that could probably come with Phase Two. The cafe and other things like that are a little bit challenging in that right now, while the J is caught in a tough position, everything about the J and what we care deeply and try to foster is this togetherness. And our J Cafe and our lobby hangout space, that just catches it all. And at the same time, right now, we're not supposed to hang out. And so right now, we are not, I'm seeing this question from Elena, we're not actually sure when that's gonna be permitted because it's a capacity issue. It's a, what kind of behavior like, you know, does that foster when people are hanging out? And right now, we're still supposed to be kind of keeping it on the move and moving people. So that's a little bit further out there at the moment.
Donna, we have a question for you. Any indication what the fall will look like for ECS?
Well, you know, we are, you know, again, we're just staying on top of all the guidelines. So as soon as, you know, we just received new additional guidelines and so follow the phases and, you know, we'll, right now, the recommendations is to have lower classroom sizes, so no more than ten people per classroom. We just checked in with our licenser and she believes that that capacity will expand by the fall, but they haven't given us anything definitive yet. So, you know, at this point, we're working on more of a shorter plan, but again, hope to get some updates from the licenser and other, some of the other health governing agencies. And they don't need, we said in the beginning, we promised to communicate and keep you informed as we know things.
And I'll jump in and say, we're also being creative about space there and looking at other options to assure that we can accommodate the families that we've always been able to accommodate and who are looking to rejoin us. So.
Renee, I got a question about locker rooms, showers, steam room, et cetera. Do you want to answer that one?
Sure thing. That's a great question. At this point, in our early opening for fitness, the locker rooms will not be available for use. There will not be showers, there will not be lockers, there will not be changing areas available, and we will also not have towel service available. This is all in keeping with the current guidelines from public health officials. So what that means is when we are able to reopen our fitness center or even just our one-on-one training or small group exercise classes, you will need to come to the J already in your workout attire with your own towel and with a water bottle, because no drinking fountains either. We do have water filling stations, so you will be able to refill your water bottle. We will continue to follow the guidance to be able to open those locker rooms or to be able to phase the opening of those locker rooms as it becomes available. But as of right now, we didn't want to wait to open till we could use the locker rooms because we do have guidance on being able to have folks in fitness area. So as soon as we know more, we'll let you know.
A segue to that, coming end of this week on sjcc.org, we'll be launching a reopen webpage that will have all the information on reopening. We are working on that right now. And so please keep looking at sjcc.org. That's where we will have all this stuff as it changes. We've got a couple of great questions from Wendy Kaufman. Amy, I think this might come to you about, do we expect any additional restrictions on seniors? And what senior classes do we envision? What's the timeline for that? So can you talk about that important demographic for us?
Yeah, and an important demographic is a great way to say it. Many, I mean, we are, part of what makes the J so great is this cross-generational interaction, which happens in so few places in the world today. So it's just something we cherish. We are, I've been asked this by others. There's nothing about the J that would ever say seniors are not welcome at all. We, of course, recognize also that the public health guidance and CDC guidance continues to say that there is a vulnerable population. So as we think about the fitness center, we have thought about, can we do restricted hours, much like grocery stores have done, to limit, to maintain kind of that separation from other demographics or other populations. The size of our, many of our fitness classes tend to attract one demographic or another, and the size that those groups are operating at again, with four people in the class and an instructor, should be able to, you know, again, we would say the same thing that the health officials say, that if you're in a vulnerable population, regardless of age, be mindful about what you're doing outside of your home. We will continue to stream all of those fitness classes for the foreseeable future. So we have seen great uptake in that. It is connecting a whole lot of new people. So part of what we're doing in all this is learning about things like that and how many people want to be able to engage from home. So I don't want people to think it's an either or. We will maintain both of those for a while and continue to think about the best way to serve those demographics. But seniors are just, I mean, vital. And, you know, I think most of us would say the guidance for what a vulnerable population and age around COVID, it's young. So it's about all of us following that guidance and taking care of ourselves. I hope that answers it, Wendy, but jump in if you need more clarification.
We're gonna stick with fitness. I'm not sure, Renee, Amy, we have a question about, can we describe what the fitness classes of four people will look like? Renee, Amy, takers?
I'll jump in and Renee. So right now, our team has gone in and actually tried to space out. We'll be designing actually workout spaces in the group fitness room, which is where most of our exercise classes take place today. They will be spaced out. And then again, we will be putting a camera in there so that those same classes can be streamed. We've learned a lot about which classes are most popular of the online classes that are available. And I would, I invite anybody who has a particular interest or something you've been missing, send us an email, info@sjcc.org. You can start there. I don't want to say we take requests, but we definitely listen to what is gonna bring people back and kind of re-energize everyone in this moment. So please share your favorites and let us know.
Please keep the questions coming. We'll have to say goodnight to Orin, who's needs to leave us. Thank you for joining us. But we'll keep going with the question and answer because we've got some good ones here. Great one. Renee, this one's for you. What guidelines, restrictions will there be for groups renting spaces?
That's a great question. So obviously, any group that comes into the J will also have to follow any of the guidelines that are in place for whatever phase we happen to be in of the Safe Start Reopening Plan. That said, our priority right now is going to have to be getting the J's business back on track. So and making sure that we have enough time and space to do sufficient cleaning and disinfecting and sanitizing in between all of the programs. It's our expectation right now that will pretty significantly curtail our rental opportunities for the summer. We're gonna have to evaluate as we go, as you might imagine, because of the smaller group sizes for things like school and camp, we're going to have to be spreading out into many, many more spaces in the J, which means that those spaces become less available for rental. We have tried to figure out how we can best accommodate our programming, our school and camp and fitness classes, and moving fitness equipment into the gym and to be able to balance all those spaces and places. And when we find that there is additional space for rentals and when those rental requesters can demonstrate that they'll be able to abide by the current parameters and guidelines that are in place, we will start to enter into some rentals again.
Let's stick with you, Renee. We have a question about, will members be required to wear masks at all times at the J?
So there is a public, yep, there's a public. Sorry?
Are we gonna have masks available is the second part of that question?
Great question. So let me take the first part. Right now, there is a health directive in the State of Washington to wear masks in public, especially when you are indoors or likely to be within six feet of another person. We recognize that there are some folks, and in fact, the health directive also acknowledges that there are some folks for whom wearing a mask doesn't really work. So those who are deaf or hard of hearing, folks with sensory integration challenges, children who are unable, or even adults who are unable to put a mask on or take it off by themselves. So there will be some limited exceptions, but the expectation is that the J and those who come to visit us will follow the health directive.
We've got some ECS questions. Donna and Carrie, if you want to take some of these. First one being, how will we know which families can return to ECS as essential workers? And then there's a couple more questions. So we'll start with that one.
So when we, our plan right now is to, as Carrie was saying, open in Phase Two, so that won't be limited to essential workers. It'll be open to any of our families if we want to return to the J.
Next question for ECS is, will the ECS children be required to wear masks?
Licensing actually states any child two or under is not allowed to wear a mask. And the children have to be able to take it off and put it on by themselves in order to wear them. So for the most part, children will not be wearing masks. And I'd like to add something to the complexity of that question. Carrie's a hundred percent right. And on top of that, with every one of these decisions we're making, and we've talked about this in some of our prior communication, upholding our values as an agency and our Jewish values throughout is something that we hold core, like dear and core to the decisions we make. And whether that's protecting vulnerable populations and making sure that we can manage them, or in this case, we've thought a lot about the social emotional welfare of young children. And in the big picture of life, it is important that children understand how to read faces and facial expressions, social emotional cues and everything else. And so there's the physical guidance and then there's a little bit of wanting to make sure that we continue to to serve that need and make sure we uphold the value that we hold very dear to everything we do in ECS, which is creating an environment where children grow and blossom into their best people. So that's something we also think about all the time.
Continue on ECS. We have a question in our chat here. Will you offer staggered schedules for the students in ECS if so, when, fall sooner?
Donna, you can go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so we are, you know, the guidelines from the licenser and CDC are that groups should be kept together. And so the, I think, in terms of staggering, the way we planned it is we'll offer stagger drop-off and pickup. But in terms of the day, kids will pretty much be with their classrooms and teachers and will consider them their own units. So they won't be interacting with other classrooms. They'll be, you know, having their own bathrooms that they go to. They'll have their own say ground time. So really, it's just looking at each unit of each classroom as a separate entity and trying to limit exposure, you know, as much as possible, you know, from other classrooms, teachers, and kids.
I'll just jump in and add to that. Thank you, Donna. I think that the school districts in our area are also looking at a variety of staggered schedules and all sorts of possibilities for fall. And one of the questions that we just recently asked in a survey to ECS parents was, would a staggered schedule, like a two-day-on, two-day-off schedule, be something your family would be interested in? And so we have heard from at least most of the local school districts that they're intending to share their plans for fall by the end of this school year, which is actually just a week from Friday, I believe. And so we hope to have a little bit more guidance then because we'll be able to see how well we can track to what they are doing. And for families who have children who are in an early childhood program like at the J and an older child in elementary school, it's really important to think about how people can synchronize those schedules, especially as a lot of parents continue to try to work from home and have children, remote learning from home, and have children in the early childhood set who can't do a lot of remote learning from home. So we will be continuing to take a look at that. So, thank you.
Dave, I have a question for you. Has there any thought been given to Kidstown for the next school year?
Yeah, there has been. And actually, it's a perfect segue to what Renee is saying. Right now, we are waiting to see what is going to be happening in the local school districts. But we intend to have something and it will be safe and socially distant and according to all the guidelines. But stay tuned.
I want to add on to that and also saying, coming on to what Renee was talking about, the public school districts, as we watch what's happening there, we're gonna think about what other programs we can offer to, you know, we can offer to, you know, support and scaffold what might be going on in our public schools. There's, we're, we're just kinda, we're waiting for a lot of that too.
Um, we have a question, uh, when will we communicate the hours of ECS? Um, when will we communicate to those families that are part of, uh, first wave, et cetera? When, when are we communicating all that?
Yeah, that's coming out very shortly. There's just a few, um, added, you know, pieces that we're organizing right now. And so that will come out very shortly, um, the next couple of days.
And again, I'll, I'll just, uh, remind people that this phasing with the Safe Start Washington is driving so much. And if we saw a setback, um, we have to watch all that. And, and we have, um, consulted with a few experts in our community, pediatricians, epidemiologists, people who work on kind of, um, child vaccinations and, um, and guidance we've received and it's really, it's really important is looking at what's happening in our community and what kind of transmission and infection rates are going on and what trends are we seeing? And so we're following all of that data. And so all of these are targets, but you know, as Donna said, we wanna make sure families have enough, you know, um, lead time to make plans and adjust their own programs. But we really hope to get communication out in the next few days, just to let people know where we're at. And again, this, uh, this discussion we're having now will live on, so people can reference it if they have questions.
We have time for a couple more questions. Um, we, we've got one that we've actually gotten quite a bit. Uh, Renee, this might be to you. Is the Kesher Garden open to people who have plots?
Yes. So right now, um, the Kesher Garden is open on Wednesday and Friday mornings. If, um, uh, somebody should outbound to me if they haven't yet received a notice, cause we did email and folks that have plots. So it sounds like somebody might not have gotten the notice. But yeah, right now, we're open Wednesday and Friday mornings. And as we look to, um, open up the building, um, a little more in the next few weeks, um, we'll adjust those hours as well.
Great. Thank you. Uh, let's see. We got one. A good question about parent drop-off. Um, Lori Rose asks, will parents be allowed inside to drop off kids to ECS? You guys wanna go ahead and go over a little bit, the, the drop-off process that we're working on?
So there'll be more information to come out along with the email, um, about our potential opening. But at this point, um, we are gonna try to keep as many adults out of the building as possible and really limit it to the teachers and the children.
Great. I'm not seeing, uh, any more Q and A, um, questions in our queue that, um, have not been answered. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Great turnout, fantastic questions, uh, this evening. Uh, we really appreciate it. So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and sign off for the evening. Amy, do you have any closing comments for us to, uh, end the evening?
I just wanna keep saying thank you. This community is what fuels us, energizes us and keeps us focused on doing our best work all of the time. Uh, hopefully, everybody's been able to see the amount of energy and work we're putting into bringing the J. And I don't wanna say back, because I'm not sure we're going back to where we are. We're going to a new place and that new place will be wonderful in all its own ways and carry the same spirit and love and joy that the J is known for. And thank you for your support, your partnership. Please reach out with questions. And I'll also say, we're gonna need support in the ongoing months. So we, we look to all of you to, uh, work with us, partner with us and, uh, just continue being there to keep the J moving and contributing to this community as it has for the last 50 years, 51 now officially.
Thank you, everybody. Again, this will be archived on Facebook as well as we'll put it on SJCTV, which is our YouTube channel, um, youtube.com/StrongJCC. So again, um, from all of our pals, thank you for taking your evening, uh, to join us and answer these questions. Um, we are always available for questions. The best email, um, is info@sjcc.org. Um, a, a bunch of us monitor that every day. Uh, we will get your question to the right person who will get you an answer. So again, on behalf of us all at the J, thank you so much for everything that you do for us and for joining us and have a great night. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.